Gracious God, we thank you for this evening that you've given us and we ask that you be with us as we study your word. We give you thanks for the word that is before us and the experience of the early church and of your first disciples and followers. Help us that we might learn from them. Help us that we might be more like them in many ways and help us, oh Lord, in all that we say and all that we do during this time together, that it might be for your glory. For it's in Jesus' name we pray, amen. Um, so we'll start off this, our third session together. We'll be reading through Acts, chapter five, verse 12 and chapter through chapter eight, verse 25. Let me unmute everybody real quick and ask if you have thoughts or questions or other things from either the first or the second session that we just covered. I know we covered a lot of stuff that was pretty controversial in lots of ways last time with Ananias and Sephira and all that fun stuff. So I just wanted to open it up and see if anybody had any thoughts or questions or comments or anything like that from last time. Before we slug on and move to on through chapter five, verse 12 and following. Okay, well, let me also share my screen. Well, there we go. And I'll pull this up so you all can see the, you're all able to see the scripture passages, okay?
Yes.
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 If, do I need to make the, the text a little bigger? Would that help or? Make the Greek a little smaller and English a little bigger. So we'll, we'll be starting off here, chapter five, verse 12, and we get one of those summaries. Before we start officially on to all of this though, let me see, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm still trying to learn all the the, the way to work Zoom. I'm trying to figure out how to mute everyone again. I may have to stop sharing my screen first for a moment, so let me, let me mute everybody again, sorry. And then you could still unmute yourselves. And we'll share the screen. Here we go. So thank you for your patience as I try to learn how to host a Zoom meeting. I know how to be in one, but hosting one of these is a little bit different. It has, you know, 74 different features that you can use. And I only typically need about two of those, so we'll start off and we, so one of the things that you'll notice as we go through, if you were able to read through the section of chapters five through eight that we're doing today, you'll notice a couple things that come out and what, what stood out in my mind, at least as I was going through reading it this week, is a bunch of different conflicts that happen. And so you get different conflicts, some of which are, let's see, so some would be described as a conflict between Jews and Gentiles. Another one between the authorities, the religious authorities and the people. Another between the religious authorities and the disciples. Conflicts between what we might determine Jew and Christian. Although at that point, you know, there, there was no such real thing as Christian at that point. It was simply a sect within Judaism still amongst several sects within Judaism. We often think of the ancient biblical times as being much more monolithic than they really were. You know, we think of Judaism as being just one thing, but even in our day, Judaism is very diverse. You have the, the Orthodox Jews, you have the conservatives, you have the reformed. And there's quite a big difference between the reformed Jews and the Orthodox Jews, for instance, and then you have the ultra Orthodox Jews, the, the Hasidic ones. And it was always lots of fun because there was, there were two synagogues in Asheville where I, where I was before coming here to China Grove. And I really enjoyed all the folks in both of those synagogues. And then there was one ultra Orthodox synagogue that was there and they wore the black hats and the black coats and stuff like that all the time. And they lived just, they lived in a little condo complex. It was a series of extended families, all of one family that were part of that ultra Orthodox group. And they lived just right by my church and my, the window to my office overlooked and I could, could see them sometimes and I was, because they walked everywhere and they'd have, they had several kids, this one family did. And so I was taking the trash down to the street from the church on, on trash day as they were walking by. And I know a little bit of modern Hebrew from my time in Israel and stuff and I'm really good with ancient Hebrew, but my modern Hebrew is not nearly what it should be, but I can, I could carry on a little bit of a conversation. I can order, you know, food at a place or something like that, but it's not very good, but it's enough to really make some Orthodox Jews really question what in the world is happening when the Methodist minister in town is conversing with. So I would say, "Boker Tove", which means good morning. And he says, "Boker Tove", and I would say, "Manishma, how are you doing?" And he said, "Tove", "Good", you know, and I would say, and he asked me how I was doing. I say, "Ah, Besseder", which means okay. And the guy, he, he just had the most confused look in the world on his face, but I think we oftentimes run into things in our own thought processes where we think that Judaism is one thing and Christianity is one thing. And we forget that there was a time when Judaism and Christianity were, you know, one in the same. And in lots of ways, we still are. In, in other ways, we're not. But in the ways that matter the most, I think we have way more in common than we do differences. Same's true within different denominations or groups within Christianity. The most important thing is that we follow the teachings and example of Jesus, right? Unfortunately, Jesus didn't leave us a book of discipline like the Methodist, so the Methodist church had to step in and give us one of those. But anyway, I just want to caution you from that thinking that we often do in the modern world of thinking very monolithically that Judaism is one thing and Christianity is one thing and, you know, all Jews think this or all Christians think that. And so this, this conflict that comes up in the early church between all sorts of different groups is really a fascinating thing. We also see a conflict that starts to emerge in these first few chapters here that we're looking at this afternoon of a kind of a distinction between clergy and laity starting to kind of form. And there's certainly a very vivid conflict between what we would call the church and the world, to, to use kind of more modern terms with it. And then finally, there's another conflict with Simon Peter and then Simon the magician, who's often referred to as Simon Magus in, in other translations and parts. So we get all sorts of conflicts that are, I would say characterize these three chapters that we're looking at today. And so just kind of keep your eyes peeled for those. And we'll, we'll touch on a few of them as we go through. But I, I wanted to at least see if, well, let's go through this first little section here with chapter five, verse 12 through 16. Gives us, it's one of those summary things. And so I'll start, start us off by reading that. "Now many signs and wonders were done among the people through the apostles, and they were all together in Solomon's Portico", it's an area of the temple. "None of the rest dared to join them, but the people held them in high esteem. Yet more than ever believers were added to the Lord, great numbers of both men and women, so that they even carried out the sick into the streets and laid them on cots and mats in order that Peter's shadow might fall on some of them as he came by. And a great number of people would also gather from the towns around Jerusalem, bringing the sick and those tormented by unclean spirits, and they were all cured." So that's a, a pretty profound summary there that we have. Let me, let me stop sharing my screen just a minute and unmute everyone. Let's see. Okay, here we go. Unmute all there. I like being able to talk to y'all and at least y'all having the option to say something back to me. What did you, what, what kind of reflections did you see in that first little section there? Anything stand out to you?
In verse 13, it's interesting where it says, "None of them, none of the rest dared to join them."
Yeah, yeah. I think that-
But yet they revered them, so.
Well, and so we, we're all, but the people held them in high esteem. So as Luke is using that term, "the people" or sometimes he'll say, "the crowd", you know, it's, it's almost as though there's the, the religious authorities, the temple authorities didn't seem to hold the disciples in very high esteem. However, the crowd and the people seemed to have held them in extremely high esteem. And so you, you start to notice a, a real tension that's developing between, or that's continuing, I guess you could say, between the religious authorities and the competing religious authorities in the disciples. And the, the group that we would call the church that's starting to emerge there. Another interesting thing that that I picked up on with this is it seems like it would have been a clientele in the early church of less than desirable people in lots of ways. These were people who had been sick or who had been tormented by unclean spirits. You know, they, they, these weren't the sort of people we want in our church, right? It seems to be the sort of clientele in the early church of being a troubled group of people who have been healed. Folks who had been sick, folks who had been, you know, tormented by unclean spirits, whatever we want to take of that. You know, it wasn't the, the wealthy people so much in Jerusalem that were being drawn. It was the poorer folks. So I think that's an important thing to to think about with all this. And so let me move us along a little further. It says here, I'll start with 17. "Then the high priest took action, he and all who were with him, that is, the sect of the Sadducees, being filled with jealousy, arrested the apostles and put them in the public prison. But during the night, an angel of the Lord opened the prison doors and brought them out and said, 'Go stand in the temple and tell the people the whole message about this life. And when they heard this, they entered the temple at daybreak and went out with their teaching. And when the high priest and those with him arrived, they called together the council and the whole body of the elders of Israel and sent to the prison to have them brought. But the temple police, when, when they went there, they did not find them in the prison, so they returned and reported. We found the prison securely locked and the guards standing at the doors, but when we opened them, we found no one inside. Now, when the captain of the temple and the chief priests heard these words, they were perplexed about them, wondering what might be going on. Then someone arrived and announced, 'Look, the men whom you put in prison are standing in the temple and are teaching the people.' Then the captain went with the temple police and brought them, but without violence, for they were afraid of being stoned by the people. And when they brought them, they had them stand before the council, and the high priest questioned them, saying, 'We gave you strict orders not to teach in this name, and yet here you fill Jerusalem with your teaching and you're determined to bring this man's blood on us. But Peter and the apostles answered, 'We must obey God rather than any human authority. The God of our ancestors raised up Jesus, whom you killed by hanging him on a tree.' You, you, this is a very common sermon that we get here in the book of Acts whenever conflicts with the religious authorities and others emerge. And when they heard this, they were enraged and wanted to kill them." I'm on verse 33 now. And so let me, let me stop us right there for just a moment. And we can go through this little section here in the tension with the, the temple officials. An angel breaks the disciples out of prison. Not so they could escape, but so they can keep on preaching. And so you notice they were preaching in the temple precincts and they get arrested for doing that. And then an angel of the Lord breaks them out in the middle of the night. And then rather than flee, they go right back to the temple precincts and start preaching again. So, so that's interesting. And we also see another one of those instances there with verse 26, "but without violence, for they were afraid of being stoned by the people." So the, the religious authorities are definitely feeling some anger and some pressure by the competing religious authority of the disciples in all this. And so this is, and, and you know, as I go through reading this, I, I I have to find myself a little bit sympathetic to the religious authorities and, and the Sadducees and the Pharisees. They're not mentioned by name here in this one, but the Sadducees, the Pharisees, the, the council. I mean, those are my people, you know, those are people who went to Duke, who have Reverend next to their name, in other words. Those are people who, you know, like have been given authority by the council to do stuff. And here it is, these, these country bumpkins from the Galilee like masquerading as though they're the ones in charge. Well, who do they think they are, you know? So I'm, I'm a little bit at least sympathetic to some of the plight here that the, that the religious authorities are, are facing. However, what I find to be really interesting, and this comes through in the chapters coming up, is that the disciples developed their own competing authority, you know, their own sort of class system as well, their own sort of way of, of making decisions and of saying who's in charge and who's not. But it's a separate system from the temple. And so I find that really interesting. There's even sort of a continuing difference of opinion, and this will become very clear as we go throughout the book of Acts in later chapters. There's a big difference between the, the Peter in particular and some of the other disciples, especially Paul. Because Paul becomes one of the, the main characters in, and one of the main figures in this book of Acts, especially later on. And in the early church in general, if it wasn't for Paul, it's likely that the early church would have remained just a sect within Judaism as we think of it today, anyway. And so Paul really made the, made Christianity much more accessible to the Gentile world and not just a Jewish movement. So it's, it's an important thing to, to think about here, but it's, it's neat to see the, the hierarchy that comes out, but. So the, the religious authorities are pretty mad. They thought they had this problem solved. They put them in jail. Well, that didn't work. They told them not to preach in the name of Jesus. Well, that didn't work. So now they're trying to figure out what they can do with this problem, but they're, they can't really do much because they're worried that the people will stone them if they treat them too harshly. And so this one rabbi, who is a very famous rabbi and a very well-respected person in the council, his name is Gamaliel. Gamaliel, a teacher of the law, respected by all the people, stood up and ordered the men to be put outside for a short time. I'm on verse 35 now. Let me go back to sharing my screen with you so you can see that one. Pull it up here. Verse 35. So here we go. Get everything on my screen adjusted. "So when they heard this, they were enraged, this is the council, and wanted to kill them. But a Pharisee in the council named Gamaliel, teacher of the law, you know, he, he says, 'Put the disciples out of the room for just a minute and let, let us just talk amongst ourselves.' And so he says to them, 'Fellow Israelites, consider carefully what you propose to do to these men. For some time ago, Judas rose up claiming to be somebody, and a number of men, about 400, joined him, but he was killed, and all who followed him were dispersed and disappeared. After him, Judas the Galilean rose up at the time of the census and got people to follow him. He also perished, and all who followed him were scattered. So in the present case, I tell you, keep away from these men and let them alone, because if this plan or this undertaking is of human origin, it will fail. But if it is of God, you will not be able to overthrow them. In that case, you may even be found fighting against God. They were convinced by him. And when they had called in the apostles, they had them flogged. And they ordered them not to speak in the name of Jesus and let them go. And as they left the council, they rejoiced that they were considered worthy to suffer dishonor for the sake of the name. And every day in the temple and at home, they did not cease to teach and proclaim Jesus as the Messiah." One thing that I would note in that section there, right up at the beginning is of this last little bit, verse 33. "When they heard this, they were enraged and wanted to kill them." I'll tell them myself for a minute here. Oftentimes, those times when I get angry at Jennifer for something that she says, it's because she's right. Have y'all had that experience before? You know, like some of the things that our spouse might tell us that make us the angriest do so because they're probably very truthful. And I, I'll, there was a gentleman in my, my, one of my previous churches and he was, he was just like, people were, were very threatened by him lots of times. He was, I won't say he was a bully, because he wasn't trying to be a bully. But he was perceived as a bully by a lot of people. And one day I, I came home and I was telling Jennifer about this and she's like, "I don't know why", we'll, we'll call this guy Billy. She says, "I don't know why you're so, you know, like down on Billy, because you're just like him." She's like, "If you weren't the preacher, you would be him, you know?" And I got so mad at her. I was like, "I would not be him. I am not", and I was like, "Dang, you're right. I would just like him, you know, if I wasn't the preacher and the one having to deal with this sort of stuff, I would", he's saying exactly what I would say and being exactly how I would be and, "Oh my gosh, I am Billy", you know? So I, I always find that anger can be a very telling thing. Sometimes those things that make us angry, they make us angry because, well, maybe it's true. C.S. Lewis says that, "Whatever sin we hate the most in others is the one that we have the most of in our own selves." And he, he kind of compares it to, you know, when you drive down the road, you tend to notice the car that's the same make and model as the one you're driving, more so than any of the other random cars that come by. But if somebody's driving your same car, it's like, "Oh, there's my car." And so he kind of says that it's, it's very similar to that. And, and I think he's true. You know why? Because it really pissed me off to hear that. Have y'all ever experienced that sort of thing?
Oh, yeah.
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 I, I think it's important for us to sometimes take stock of those things that anger us the most. Because, you know, it, it's like that old saying, every time you point one finger at someone, you got four pointing back at you. So something to be said for that, at least. Well, and I think Gamaliel's proclamation, this sometimes gets referred to as Gamaliel's Law. You know, if it's of human origin, it'll fail. If it's of godly origin, then you won't be able to overthrow it. And in fact, you might even be found fighting against God. So I, I think that's a very wise statement and something that the test of time has proven out, hasn't it? They weren't able to stop that movement, far from it. So interesting stuff here. So coming up in chapter six now. Well, let me, let me pause real quick. Any observations or questions on that last section of chapter five that we've been talking about? Nope. Okay. Well, I'll move us along to chapter six. Now, coming up in this next section, we get a couple different things. We get a conflict between the Greek-speaking Jews and the Aramaic-speaking Jews in Jerusalem. And a conflict about the widows of each group and particularly the Greek-speaking widows not getting enough food or not getting the, their fair amount of food and the, the Aramaic-speaking Jews in the church. And, you know, I mean, I'm saying in the church, but y'all know what I, what I mean by this. You know, it's, it's a very early movement at this point, but the, the, the followers of Jesus, the, the Greek-speaking ones felt like their widows were being neglected in the distribution of food. And the Aramaic-speaking Jews were, so we get a, a conflict that starts to come up between the Greek-speaking ones, called the Hellenists, and the Aramaic-speaking ones known as the Hebrews. And so we have that. Then we have a, a very long sermon by Stephen. And I'm going to go very quickly through that one, okay? And I'm going to mention Stephen and the, the beginning and, and the end of all that, but that big chunk, which is the longest sermon in the book of Acts, I, I'm not going to, to focus a lot of time on that, because I want to get us through some of this other stuff. Would anybody like to read for us this little section here up to, so now there's a bunch of crazy names, so I will, I'll have just somebody read verses one through four of chapter six. Any volunteers on that?
I'll read it.
Okay.
"Now during those days, when the disciples were increasing in number, the Hellenists complained against the Hebrews, because their widows were being neglected in the daily distribution of food. But the twelve called together the whole community of the disciples and said, 'It is not right that we should neglect the word of God in order to wait on tables. Therefore, friends, select from among yourselves seven men of good standing, full of the spirit and of wisdom, whom we may appoint to this task, while we, for our part, will devote ourselves to prayer and to serving the word.'"
So I'll continue on here with verse five. "What they said pleased the whole community, and they chose Stephen, a man full of faith and the Holy Spirit, together with Philip, Procharis, Nicor, Timon, Harmonus, and Nicholas, a proselyte of ant- a proselyte of Antioch. They had these men stand before the apostles, who prayed and laid their hands on them. The word of God continued to spread. The number of disciples increased greatly in Jerusalem, and a great many of the priests became obedient to the faith. So that's an interesting little spot there at the end as well. Okay, so I mentioned, just before we were reading this, I think sometimes it's important to, to kind of explain what these groups are. So the Hellenists again are the Greek-speaking Jews, who may have been from other parts of the world. They might have been from what we would call Turkey or Greece or other parts of the diaspora. They could have been from all over the world. But Greek was the language that most people spoke in the Roman Empire. Now Rome, even though they, you know, had control over lots of stuff, Rome only, Latin was only done for the Romans and for a small portion of them. I mean, Latin was like important, but Greek was what everybody spoke in the Mediterranean world, pretty much, apart from some local dialects of different languages. If there was, Greek was what English is today. And however, the Jews in Israel, those spoke Aramaic. And Aramaic, it sounds like it's some other language than Hebrew, but it's really just a little dialect of Hebrew. It's not that much, you wouldn't be able to tell the difference between Hebrew and Aramaic. The differences are very slight. But the Jewish-speaking folks and the Greek-speaking folks have this, this feeling that there's some tension there, right? Because the widows of the Greek-speaking ones are not getting their fair share of the daily distribution of food. So what we get is twofold here. In verse two, "The twelve called together the whole community of disciples." So we see kind of the twelve functioning in a different role than everybody else in the community, don't we? The twelve, the disciples, the apostles, whatever you want to call them, the twelve seem to have a different standing within the community as far as the authority goes. But there's still input from the whole community, isn't there? And so they, they call everybody together, and they say, "It's not right that we should neglect the word of God in order to wait on tables." So the twelve are spending a lot more time preaching and teaching and stuff like that. And they don't feel like they're able to give that their full attention because they're worrying about the daily distribution of food and stuff like that. And so you start to see kind of a clergy of sorts develop there, don't you? Look at that, silly preachers trying to get out of work. That wouldn't be an altogether untrue statement if we were, you know, looking at the book of Acts here. But I think it might be a little simplistic and short-sighted. But they say, "It's not right that we should neglect the word of God in order to wait on tables." So they decide to get seven men elected from, and they say, "Elect from among yourselves seven men of good standing, full of the Holy Spirit and of wisdom, who they can appoint for that task, so they can devote themselves to prayer and serving the Word." So that list of names that we get here, chosen, is there anything interesting about those names? That, you know, knowing the backstory of this conflict between the Greek-speaking Jews and the Aramaic-speaking Jews in the early church, is there anything about those names that looks interesting? Or that you think might give us some light on how the disciples handled this problem in the early church? I'll give you a hint. Do they look like Jewish names? Or do they look like Greek names? I know it can sometimes be hard to tell that sort of thing, but they're all Greek names. Isn't that interesting? So the, the Greek-speaking widows were being neglected. And so the whole community voted that the, the Greek-speaking people in the community would be the ones in charge of all the distribution of the food. So the ones who were being slighted, who were, you know, complaining about being slighted, were the ones put in charge of it.
That happens.
That's interesting. It does, it does. I hear you on that totally. If we think about it in a little more, that's a very pragmatic sort of way. But if we think about it in a very, in a little more theological sort of light, that, that says a lot. I think of, in, in the, the modern church, oftentimes there are some, some white congregations that have a mission to a Hispanic group of people. And sometimes they'll even have a Hispanic congregation as part of their church. Some of you may know people or congregations that have that, particularly in areas where there's a large population of, you know, either Hispanic folks or folks of some other ethnicity. And it would be like the Hispanic congregation of the church complaining that they don't get their fair share of the budget. And, and then, and then being, and then them being said, "Okay, well, guess what? Y'all are in charge of the finance committee." Like, could you imagine that happening? A lot of times, the, the old guard, so to speak, might be hesitant to relinquish the purse strings, you know? But here we have that disenfranchised group being given a lot more authority. So it's, personally, I find that really interesting and a unique way that the early church was dealing with that. I know it might seem a bit obscure to say that just because of the names, but it's not, it's, those are totally Greek names. And it's, it's important that Luke tells us that it was these, these Greeks who are doing it. So, okay, so let me, let me move us on from that. I just wanted to point that out. It's, it's an interesting thing to think about, isn't it? Because even the early church had its fair share of problems. And Luke in Acts certainly doesn't shield us from that. And we might feel like whenever we hear passages like what we had last week, you know, that it's a bit of a, too rosy of a picture being painted of the early church. But if you, if you read on, it's obviously not just that. Because Luke gives us all sorts of insight into conflicts that are happening there. And so Stephen is one of the people mentioned there as the people to wait tables, right? One of the seven in charge of that. And so then we're told down here in verse eight. My screen's still being shared with you all, right? So you can see the, okay. So Stephen, "full of grace and power, did great wonders and signs among the people; then some of those who belonged to the synagogue of the freedmen, as it was called, Serenians, Alexandrians, and others of those from Cilicia and Asia, stood up and argued with Stephen; but they could not withstand the wisdom and the spirit with which he spoke. Then they secretly instigated some men to say, 'We've heard him speak blasphemous words against Moses and God.' So they stirred up the people, as well as the elders and the scribes; and then they suddenly confronted him, seized him, and brought him before the council. They set up false witnesses, who said, 'This man never stopped saying things against this holy place and the law; for we have heard him say that this Jesus of Nazareth will destroy this place and will change the customs that Moses handed on to us.' And all who sat in the council looked intently at him, and they saw that his face was like the face of an angel." Hold on, let me, let me pause us here. And so we get a mention again of these synagogue of the freedmen, the Serenians, the Alexandrians, and others from Cilicia and Asia. That Turkey is what we would call that area, stood up and argued with Stephen. So I told you that there were these two groups, right? The Greek-speaking Jews and the Aramaic-speaking Jews. And they often clashed with one another. And I also said that Stephen was one of those Greek-speaking Jews. We can tell because his name's Greek. And then we're told the name of some of those synagogues of Greek-speaking Jews, the freedmen, the Serenians, the Alexandrians, and those from Cilicia and Asia. His own people, his own group, are the ones who throw him under the bus. It's not, it's not the Aramaic-speaking Jews in the early church who get all up in arms about Stephen, who get all up in arms about making sure that the customs of Moses are kept as... It's interesting, isn't it? Because that group, those Greek-speaking Jews in the early church, were, were looked down upon as like, you know, not being Jewish enough because they spoke Greek instead of speaking Aramaic. And they're the ones trying to defend the status quo, so to speak, a little more by, by throwing Stephen under the bus. So it's, it's, it's interesting, isn't it? Because it's a very complex sort of tension that's going on both within the early church and outside of it with all of this. And so, but also, one thing that's very similar is this is exactly what happened to Jesus, isn't it?
Yeah, yes.
Same sort of pattern as, as what happened with Jesus is happening with Stephen. And then later on, when we're given the account of Stephen's death, you know, it's very similar to the death of Jesus, isn't it? So anyway, I, I just wanted to mention that as well here. So, oh, oh, hold on. Let's, let's pause just a minute and go back here. So when we're told, "Therefore, friends, select from among yourselves seven men of good standing, full of..." Why, why did they limit it to just men? I mean, I realize I'm the only man in this group today. So why did they limit it to just men? Why did they not say seven people, you know? Women? Because let me tell you, I know the women would be able to run that kitchen a whole lot better than the men, right?
Right.
What, what do you think of that?
It's a cultural thing.
Well, the women weren't, their place was at home. They didn't have a voice then.
Yeah, they may not have had a choice. I, have y'all ever seen that movie, My Big Fat Greek Wedding?
Yes.
It's a, it's a great, if you, if you ever get a chance to watch that one, it's great. And in it, it's this, this very, very Greek family. And the husband, he says, "I'm the head of the house," you know? And the wife of the husband, who's the head of the house, he says, "Yes, the man is the head, but the woman, she is the neck, and she points the head wherever it needs to go." So I, I'll, when it comes to talking about the man as the head of the household and stuff, you know, the man might be the head, but I think it's pretty true, the woman's the neck. That head's not worth a whole lot without the neck. And that neck points it wherever it should go. But anyway, I just wanted to bring up that as well. Just because they might have only allowed men or asked for just men at that point. I mean, we're told from Luke and from all the other gospel writers that it was the women who were the ones who didn't run away. You know, it was the women who came to the tomb on that Easter morning. It was the women who were there at the crucifixion. And John, you know, Peter, he, he high-tailed it out of there and was, was terrified. So, you know, just, just mentioning that little point there. So Stephen, full of power and grace, did some, some great signs. And then he gets, here we go. So he gets brought in front of the high priest. And the high priest asked him, "Are these things so?" And Stephen replied, "So, okay, I'm not going to read all this. This is a really long sermon, like I said. But let me summarize it for you." He says, "Look, y'all, throughout our history as the people of God, the Jews, the religious authorities have punished, and there is a historical precedent of the people in charge persecuting the people God sends them to be their saviors and deliverers and overseer." You know, like this happens all the time. Take Joseph, you know? Joseph was there, and his brother sold him into slavery. But Joseph was still able as, who he was, to rise up in the ranks of the government of Egypt and to deliver his brothers and the rest of his country whenever a famine came. Then you get Moses. And Moses wound up having to be raised as an Egyptian. And he comes in, liberates them from Egypt through God's hand and stuff. And what do they do? They complain, and they say, "Oh, we, we need a golden calf to rule us." And so they have Aaron make a golden calf, you know? And then he basically says, "And look at Jesus. The same thing happened with him." And, oh, you know, y'all have a pattern of persecuting the people who are the ones sent by God to tell you the better way to do stuff, you know? Like, this is the way y'all do it, and you're doing it now. And so they get pretty upset at that as well. And so then let's go down to verse fifty-one here of chapter seven. You know, when a preacher says that sermon was really long, you know that sermon was really long, right? But look at verse fifty-one. Anybody want to read that for us?
I'll be happy to.
Okay, thanks, Eunice.
You stiff-necked people, uncircumcised in heart and ears, you are forever opposing the Holy Spirit, just as your ancestors used to do. Which of the prophets did your ancestors not persecute? They killed those who foretold the coming of the righteous one; and now you have become his betrayers and murderers. You were the ones that received the law as ordained by angels, and yet you have not kept it.
Hmm. I mean, as a, as a person who writes sermons and who oftentimes has to like edit stuff out, he could have just done fifty-one through fifty-three as his whole sermon, and that would have been perfect, you know? Just saying. But man, what a, what a indictment against the folks there. Stephen certainly isn't worried about what they might do to him for what he says, is he? So verse fifty-four, "When they heard these things, they became enraged and ground their teeth at Stephen; but filled with the Holy Spirit, he gazed into heaven, saw the glory of God and Jesus standing at the right hand of God. 'Look,' he said, 'I see the heavens open and the Son of Man standing at the right hand of God.' But they covered their ears, and with a loud shout, all rushed together against him; and then they dragged him out of the city and began to stone him; and the witnesses laid their coats at the feet of a young man named Saul. While they were stoning Stephen, he prayed, 'Lord Jesus, receive my spirit.' And then he knelt down and cried out in a loud voice, 'Lord, do not hold this sin against them.' And when he had said this, he died; and Saul approved of their killing.'" That's an interesting thing. So Luke is a great storyteller, I think, because that one little- of verse 58, and the witnesses laid their coats at the feet of a young man named Saul. I mean, we all know that young man named Saul better as Saint Paul, but we get this, and then later on in the first verse of chapter eight, and Saul approved of their killing him. And that day, a severe persecution began against the church in Jerusalem, and all except the apostles were scattered throughout the countryside of Judea and Samaria. Devout men buried Stephen and made loud lamentation over him, but Saul was ravaging the church by entering house after house, dragging off both men and women. He committed them to prison. Okay, so now, down here in verse four, oh, let me move this down, sorry. I'm still getting used to this whole Zoom thing and sharing my screen and all that. So then we have Philip. So all the, most of the disciples and the other folks in the church were scattered at this point, and being persecuted by Saul and by the, I would imagine, the Jewish-speaking Jews who were not convinced that Jesus was anything other than a troublemaker, you know? And so Saul is going around putting these Christians in prison. They've still not been called Christians, though. They've not been called anything yet. Here in a little while, we'll hear the first name for followers of Jesus. Anybody care to, to get a gold star today and tell me what that name was? It's really complicated. It was known as the Way. The church sounds so much better than the Way, doesn't it? So they were just known as the Way. And so as part of this dispersion that we have here, Philip goes to Samaria. What do you know about Samaria and Samaritans?
They were not liked.
They were not liked. Do you know why they were not liked?
Weren't they half-breed? Or they intermarried?
Yeah, that's, that's one way of, of, of looking at, can I, so we're already at 4:03, but can I give, can you give me 10 more minutes? So let me give you a one-minute synopsis of why the Samaritans were looked down upon by the Jews. So you got David, and you have the 12 tribes of Israel. And David, well, Saul and David after him united those 12 tribes under one, like, leadership thing, you know, one country, so to speak. And David was, was the king. After David came Solomon, and Solomon was a pretty good king and all that, and the, the kingdom grew. Solomon had a bunch of kids, not nearly as many as the, as wives that he had, but had a whole bunch of kids, and it was not at all clear who was going to follow him. And so after Solomon, a big old civil war broke out. So you had two tribes in the south, Judah, and then you have the 10 tribes in the northern part of the country. And so these two, these two big groups, mostly with the tribe of Judah in the south, and then the other tribes up in the northern part, were fighting against each other, much like the civil war that we had in the US back in the 1860s. And so what happened was, instead of, like, in, in our situation of the civil war, instead of the north beating the south and, and, you know, drawing everybody back together, the north and the south stayed separate for, for hundreds of years, okay? David was about the year 1,000 B.C. And by the time we get Solomon and his kids and the civil war and stuff like that, we have two kingdoms. We have one king in the south and one king in the north. And the south has Jerusalem and, and the temple and all that. And the people in the south think that they're the ones in charge, and the people in the north think that they're the ones in charge. The north falls to the kingdom of Assyria in 733 B.C. So we're talking about 300 years after David, the north falls. The guy who's the emperor of Assyria, he has a different way of dealing with people that are conquered. He, the Assyrians, they would marry them off to, like, so there were some people in Russia, or what we would call Russia, that Assyria was, was ruling at that point. And so they would take a woman from Russia and marry her to a, a man from Samaria, or from the, the north somewhere in Israel, and make them have kids. And they just, it had just one big melting pot of a race. And what they systematically did over the course of several hundred years was eliminate that bloodline. I mean, you, yeah, you had Jewish blood in you if you were a Samaritan, but it was so diluted by that point, so to speak. You know, you were, you know, like, you hear people say, oh, I'm 1/16th Cherokee. Okay, well, who's, like, how are you going to know that? You know, like, and so by this point, they became even less than the people who say they're 1/16th Cherokee. So culturally, they were still very Jewish in a lot of ways, but they were mixed breed, so to speak. It was just a, a country of no, no Jews, basically. In fact, even our term Jew comes from that tribe of Judah. Before that, it was simply Hebrew. And so just the, the simple name of Jew gives us some indication that the south, that Nebuchadnezzar and Babylon, whenever they conquered the south in 586 B.C., they had a different way. They took everybody off into exile, let them still be together, but just had them in ghettos, basically, and then let them come back once the king of Persia conquered Babylon. His name was Cyrus, great. And his Hebrew name is Korish. David Korish took his name as, like, David Korish's real name wasn't Korish. He just took it because of the associations with King Cyrus letting the Jews go back and the Jews seeing him as an important figure. So anyway, there, there's a little freebie history lesson that goes along with this. But so suffice to say, the Samaritans were not full-blooded Jews, and at, at the very minimum, they were a little bit Jewish, but not Jewish enough. So Philip goes off, starts preaching to them, and there's this guy named Simon, Simon Magus or Simon the Magician there. And he becomes a convert to, to Christianity, and Philip has a lot of success preaching to the Samaritans there. And so, you know, let me go down to verse 12. But when they believed Philip, who was proclaiming the good news about the kingdom of God in the name of Jesus Christ, they were baptized, both men and women. Even Simon himself believed, and after being baptized, he stayed constantly with Philip and amazed when he saw the signs and great miracles that took place. Now, when the apostles at Jerusalem heard that Samaria had accepted the word of God, they sent Peter and John to them. Like, do you see the, the tension that's there with the Jerusalem cohort of the disciples? And, and this emphasis that's still very Jewish in its, in its movement and its scope, you know? I mean, they're still closely associated with the temple. They're still in the temple every day. You know, they even bring Stephen in front of the temple to the, the chief priest and stuff to stone him because he's not Jewish enough, and he's saying other things that, you know? And so whenever they get out and start going to Samaria, that's even, you, you know, at least they didn't go all the way to Greece, right? At least they didn't go to those crazy Turks. They just went to Samaria, which are still kind of, you know, it'd be like us going to South Carolina. It's still got Carolina in the name, right? But their barbecue's different. Anyway, so they send Peter and John down there to make sure everything's right. Apparently, the Samaritans had not received the Holy Spirit or didn't even know about the Holy Spirit at that point. So Peter and John lay their hands on them, and they received the Holy Spirit. And Simon the Magician, he sees this, and he decides he wants this too, so he offers Peter and John money so that Peter and John would give him the Holy Spirit too. And he obviously doesn't realize all this. And Peter says to him, may your silver perish with you, because you thought you could obtain God's gift with money. You have no part or share in this, for your heart's not right before God. Repent, therefore. And, and he does. I mean, we have no indication that he doesn't repent of this, but Simon Magus and Simon Peter, like I said at the beginning of this, we get a, a tension between those two, the two Simons there as well, don't we? And a big tension that's starting to emerge between Jew and Gentile. It's, it's not as acute of a tension whenever we're talking about the Samaritans, but nonetheless, we see the early church becoming much more cosmopolitan, much more multicultural, much more multi-ethnic, and the leaders in Jerusalem are uneasy about it. And I'm talking about the leaders of the early church, you know? Like, not just the, the temple folks, we're talking about the early church and that hierarchy that's there. And so they're, they're a little concerned about the things that are happening. Now, Peter and John had testified and spoken the word of the Lord. They returned, after they had testified and spoken the word of the Lord, they returned to Jerusalem, proclaiming the good news to many villages of the Samaritans. Okay, so we see a glimpse there, don't we, of, of what's to come? But we, we also see a whole lot of tension with the church becoming something other than just Jewish, a big tension. And it's a tension that's going to exist throughout this book, and that's going to take center stage many times on here. Let's see. Oh, so have you ever heard of the, the term simony? S-I-M-O-N-Y, simony? It was a practice in the Middle Ages of lots of, of nobleman stuff. They would buy the, the office of bishop, and so, oh, my son, I want him to be bishop of this, and so I'll give the church however how much money, and they make him the bishop. That, that was a practice called simony. Happened a lot in the Middle Ages. And that's taken from this encounter here with Simon Magus. And some commentators have said that every heresy in the early church could be traced back to Simon the Magician. Interesting to think about, because there were a whole bunch of heresies out there in the early church. And, you know, it didn't really get solidified very well until 300 years after Jesus as to what was good theology and what was bad. You know, there was a whole lot of stuff out there floating around. There were a whole lot of gospels out there floating around, a whole lot of writings that we would look at as very biblical-like that were floating around three and 400 years after, and some of which were written three and 400 years after. But in this early time, right now, that we're talking about in the church, there was just a lot of, a lot of emerging conflict, you know? You'd see it's head, just raise it just a little bit. So do y'all have questions or thoughts or comments on stuff so far for our session today? For next week, the fourth week, we'll be reading Acts 8:26 through 10:48. And we get, as our first story, Philip and the Ethiopian eunuch. Fascinating, all these stories are just brilliant. There, there's so, there's so much depth to them and so much nuance, and it's hard to, well, it's hard for me, as, as somebody who's spent so much time studying this stuff, it's hard for me to see a clear picture of what the early church was, you know? Because it seemed like it was so diverse. And I don't think that's a bad thing. The early church doesn't have to be, and, and the modern church doesn't have to be all the same. You know, we don't have to all look at everything exactly the same. The early church wasn't like that, and the modern church isn't either. But still, the most important thing is that we're followers of Jesus. We can interpret Jesus's teaching differently, and that's okay, you know, to some extent. Gosh, up in Asheville, I'm sorry to, to give you so many stories about my time in Asheville, but that, that's where I was for the last seven years. There was a pastor in a church up there who was so proud of herself, that was so happy because one of the, the new members of the church that they had just baptized was excited, this was right about the time of Easter, and she's telling me how excited she was about this new convert to the faith, because she was, was just looking so forward to celebrating Easter as a Christo pagan. A Christo pagan. She felt like it was okay to still be a pagan and be a Christian all at once. How do you do that? Only in Asheville. Like, that's how she identified her religious faith was, as a Christo pagan. I don't know how that's possible, but anyway, you know, all sorts of fun stories bound up with this, but, but also, like, lots of, of cognates to modern church too, you know? I mean, we could all believe different things, but, you know, you got to draw a line somewhere, like, being a pagan and a Christian all at the same time. Yeah. So anyway. Well, thanks, y'all. I appreciate you joining me. It's good to see your faces. I'm sorry that I'm not able to see more of you in person and stuff, but, but happy to see your faces and hear your voices nonetheless, and look forward to studying this stuff more next week, next Wednesday at 3:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll stop sharing my screen, and I'll go ahead and end our meeting then. Just keep everybody in your, your prayers this coming week, and look forward to sharing some worship stuff with you on Sunday.
Okay. All right. See you then. Thanks.
Bye.